Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to call the meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting. President and Board of Trustees, Bill O'Turnham. The date is October 25th, 2022. At this time, I will ask for a first call.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Hodges? Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Quayber?
Here.
Could we stand for fucking legion? Could we leave it for trustee Garcia?
To the land from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so are there any approvals of the minutes of the board meeting that was held on October 11th, 2022? Any corrections to be made?
I can't hear you, ma'am.
I said, are there any corrections to be made to the minutes for the board meeting that was held on October 11th, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Well, before we do that, there was one correction that I saw. The date of the election that was given by the Public Safety Committee should be October, shouldn't be November 8th instead of November 11th.
Oh, sorry.
Are there any other corrections to be made to the minutes? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes for October 11th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve by trustee Cap. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
A second by trustee Richardson. We'll try to take her role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Quayber?
Yes, a motion passed. Thank you. But before we open the meeting to the public, or if you have anything to address to the board, if you have any comments to make, then you can do it during that time. And we will entertain that. And otherwise, we'll go ahead with the agenda. And we will take it from there. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. Make a motion to open the meeting to the public. We have a motion to approve by trustee Quayber. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Greer. We'll try to take her role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Quayber?
Yes. Okay, so are there any public comments? Any public comments? Okay. I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
We have a motion to approve by trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public. Could we have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Garcia. We'll try to take her role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Quayber?
Yes, a motion passed. Meeting closed to the public. Thank you. Well, I just want to say in the mayor's report, we're just asking the people to keep their garbage lid closed. We're having a lot of animals in the community this year for some reason. I mean, possums and stumps and all this town.
Raccoons.
I mean, raccoons. So please keep your garbage lid closed. And trustee, we'll give a report another. And also, we're asking the peoples not to, I mean, not to use rock salt on the new sidewalks that we haven't installed. Chemical rock salt, it gets under the underlayment, it buckles up, and it destroys the concrete readily. In particular, the concrete is new, it's not 100% cured. So we're asking the peoples not to use the rock salt. And we will have a recommendation in our next move rather than to go out to force with the new rubber. And we will work diligently to make sure we get done this year before Thanksgiving. Because last time, we got in trouble with the COVID and a lot of people were upset that we couldn't get it done. And the contractor just didn't have the peoples to work to get it done. So they were blaming us. Yes, I did authorize it, but I couldn't do it anymore. So with that being said, so we all work with works to benefit our village and Burnham always moving forward. So thank you. A plug, Luke.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Again, just a reminder that early voting began yesterday, Monday, October 24th, at the County Metro City Library through November 7th. Also, Halloween trick-or-treating hours again is from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you for that report and your information. The Department of Education, Health, Safety and Welfare, trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you all for coming out on this rainy evening. Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the amount not to exceed $55,000 in order to purchase a vehicle for the Village of Burnham Police Department.
So are there any questions from the board? Okay, proceed, trustee.
I make a motion to approve or not approve on the amount not to exceed $55,000 in order to purchase vehicle for the Village of Burnham Police Department.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by trustee Greer to approve this signature not to exceed $55,000 for a police vehicle. So could we have a second, please?
Second.
A second by trustee Richardson. We'll try to take her role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Quayber?
Yes, a motion passed. Thank you. Proceed, trustee Greer.
Burnham's fire and medical report. This is for the month of September 2022. Fire call February 19th. 10 during the day and 9 during the night. Amaranth call 62. They're pretty busy. There were 30 during the day and 32 during the night. That is for the month of September 2022. November 6th, daylight saving time end. You know, daylight saving time starts on the second Sunday in March and ends on the first Sunday in November. As mentioned earlier, November 8th is election day. We're accepting donations starting November 5th through December 10th. And that's for a toy drive. The drop-off location will be right here in our village hall. Please give a little joy to one of our local children. So the toy drive is from November 5th to December 10th. According to the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, parents are strongly encouraged to have their infants and younger and young children vaccinated with either vaccine. Center for Disease Control, the CDC, recommends COVID-19 vaccine for everyone aged 6 months and older and booster for every age 5 years and older. Children given the COVID-19 vaccine may have side effects. And they're similar to those experienced by adults. The most common reports of side effects for the children include pain, redness, swelling, and tiredness, very tiredness. I just want to remind you, October 28th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., we're having a marshmallow roast and treat. That's right here in the village hall parking lot. The timing is from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. October 28th, 2022. And I have a copy for everyone. So please make sure you get a copy before you leave today. It's a COVID-19 vaccination clinic. It's by the Cook County Public Health and Season Community Hour Services. It's going to be right here in the village parking lot also. And it's going to be inside. $100, $100 gift card while flights less for all persons receiving vaccination. November 25th, 2020, and December 10th, 2020. 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Location, Village Community Center. Application will be accepted for I P. And we also have a Village of Burnham holiday. It's called Vendurama. So if you'd like to be a participant, a vendor, and if you do, I do have information for you. So come to get everything you need for gifts, food, and more. Registration of payments accepted at the Burnham Village Hall. And I've heard this mention about trick-or-treating, but the best thing I have is called voting. And as you know, the precinct changes. The Cook County Clerk's Office is responsible for the oversight of the election. Cook County Clerk's Office has mailed a tri-fold blue and white mailer that has information on the voting location site. And I'm sure most of you have received it in the mail. For more information on your voting location site, visit the Cook County Clerk's website. Precinct 1 is at the Village Hall, 14450 Madison. Precinct 62 is at Patricia Senior Center, 13925 Andre Avenue. And Precinct 85 is at Burnham Community Center. Those are the only three precincts that we have.
And that's for the next 10 years. Based on the census.
And veterans, we would love to honor our veterans in a special way. If you have served and have a photo of yourself in a uniform, please bring your photo to the village hall or any mailing. And one of our neighboring community members, this is of another community, gave us this information to pass on to you. It says, honoring all veterans. You serve us now that have served you. So they're giving out free lunches. You can dine in, or you can go out, or you can take it out. November 5th, 2022. And it's called the Word May Flood Ministry, 770th Street. And that's in Hammond, Indiana. Pastor James in Shell Ford. So if you'd like a copy of this, please send me after the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for the important information on public work in the building.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Quayber? Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve the contract with S M S Construction to perform concrete repair work in various locations throughout the Village of Burnham not to exceed $40,000.
Does trustee got any questions? Let me say, you know, they have to try to keep this within budget. Because last year, I spent too much money on doing concrete work. But we have to stay within budget. So but if I do spend too much money, it will be on you for sure. And you got my word on it. So we have to keep this within budget. So then it's not to exceed $40,000.
I make a motion to approve the contract with S M S Construction to perform concrete repair work in various locations throughout the Village of Burnham not to exceed $40,000.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by trustee Quayber to approve the concrete, I mean, contract, the concrete work, excuse me. Could we have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Richardson. We'll try to take her role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Quayber?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you.
I have a resignation letter from one of our employees, Public Works, Mr. Corinian Divine. And it's addressed to Mayor Robert Polk. Dear Mr. Polk and trustees, it is with regret that I tendered my resignation from Public Works effective immediately. I am grateful for having had the opportunity to work for the community for the past year. And I offer my best wishes for continued success in the science of Corinian Divine. And also, the job posted for the job is on our website, the Village of Burnham website. And that web address is burnham-il.gov. So anyone interested, or you know someone interested in working for Public Works, they could go through the website and apply.
C D L is required.
C D L is required. That's all.
Thank you, trustee. Well, before we get to the next item, trustee Garcia will take it. This is a project that's part of Burnham's American Development. And it was the first time that we have had a project like this. And so I'm gonna let her go ahead and read it, and then we'll talk about it a little bit more.
Good evening. Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve the review bids received at the October 19th, 2022 advertised bid opening from the Torrance Multi-Path. All of the bids were correct and in order. The bids are as follows. Deconstruction Inc., 212-214-270. Old Top Inc., 301-161.44. And Gallagher Asphalt Corp., 308-628.
Okay, I'm pulling back the motion, trustee. So this is a grant that was awarded to us from Cook County. Cook County is paying for this. So the lowest bid came in at $212,614.70. So again, we put in for the grant to receive the grant. We're gonna put it at this location here. And however you have anything to sort of explain.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is the project that we have in the village. This is a Torrance Avenue multi-use path project. The path is located just west of Torrance Avenue between 145th and 143rd Street. The path is approximately just under a quarter of a mile in length. And the path will have two access points from the existing alley. And it will also connect to a future project, which is called the Cal Sac Trail on the north side. That would be located in Comet Eastman. And that is still under design, but it will be connected to our path here. So just like trustee Garcia mentioned, we received an open bid last week. We received a total of three bids. And the low responsible bidder is Deconstruction. Once the project is awarded, which is expected to happen tonight, we will go ahead and coordinate with the contractor, get the contractors executed. And then we expect construction to start this fall with completion most likely happening in the spring of 2023.
And if there's anyone from the community who has any question, have any? I'm sorry?
Just west of Torrance Avenue and north of 145th Street. Right across the street from here.
When you come down the hill in Torrance, heading southbound, it's kind of like a vacant lot with a field board. But it is on your right-hand side if you're heading south.
It's an open field out there between 20th and 6th. I mean, between 20th and 6th. 20th and 6th. Is there any more question?
What's this path called?
I'm sorry? I need you to, Diane, I need you to use it, Miss Diane.
It'll be, yeah.
More exercise.
It'll be a recreational area for the village.
As I said, the name of trustee Richardson puts the theme that walk to live. People's exercise and hope and give all the longevity in life, you know, so.
Would it be more than just a walk with a path? Or would it be walk with a path?
I don't think you'd be able to ride a.
You'd be able to, no.
A bicycle.
Just bicycle, right, bicycles and walking, running.
So you could market it as saying it'll be a path to tie in the Greenway Trail. So our business is on State Street. Right, it'd be a good way to get from.
Correct. They would have to, then they would have to go south and turn on State Street and go east down to the Greenway.
Yeah, but I mean, nowhere ties in over there. See where it has to tie into the north side? Where it ties.
I mean, but that's tying into the Cal Sac.
Okay, whatever. Okay, it ties in the Cal Sac. So it'd be a way to tie the Cal Sac trail into our businesses on State Street.
And the county won't pay for it unless it connects to another trail. It has to have a connection.
Would there be trees and they know that on the walk?
Well, I'm sure that some of that's gonna come in time. Right now, they're gonna have to remove some of the trees that they have to put the track in. And so, but over a period of time, we hope to add some amenities to it. And we'll be glad to get some ideas from the community as to what you think and what you would like to see there. You know, or this landscaping. Maybe at some point, we could get a, I mean, a zebra over there, maybe. So maybe open the idea and hopefully can get some money to do it. Okay? Are there any other questions from the public?
Hi, Emma.
Yes, sir.
Along the path, there will be any security measures in place? Any cameras or anything that would make people comfortable walking through this path?
Well, I mean, that could be part of the plan. Maybe a little bit more long-term. I'm not saying we can have them right away. But that's something that we also could look into. Because we certainly want to convince them to be safe, you know, as always. So and whatever additive we need to put there, we would try to do it. Okay, is there any other question?
Is there a parking lot?
I'm sorry?
Parking lot for people when they bring their cars and they walk the path.
Is there somewhere in the park?
Well, they would probably be able to park on the north end, I believe. On the north end, just walk from that, park. Yeah, yeah. So that is not part of the plan right now. But that's something that we would have to take over there. So there's certainly enough room down there to do that, so. Okay? Is there any other question?
Will it be completed this year?
Probably in the spring of 2023, so next year, yes.
What if you got a dog and wanna walk him? Have people who got dogs, or they want, would that be a state area for them to walk the dog?
Yeah, definitely, yes.
He didn't want it to be with his governor's family.
Okay. Well, we have no other question. We can turn the lights back on. There will be some. I would thank you for your comments. Proceed, trustee Garcia.
I make a motion to approve the review bids received at the October 19th, 2022 advertised bid opening from the Torrance Multi-Path. All of the bids were correct and in order. So the bid, it's only for Deconstruction, right?
Yeah.
Is for Deconstruction Inc. in the amount of $212,014.70.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by trustee Garcia to award this contract bid to Deconstruction at the amount of $212,614.70. Until we have a second, please. Thank you. A second by trustee Quayber. We'll try to take her role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Quayber?
Yes, a motion passed. Thank you. And now the engineer has been authorized to contact and Deconstruction tomorrow and stop the, I mean, the paperwork, whatever needs to be done. So it will be a groundbreaking this fall. And we'll try to let you know when that is. And we'll have a celebration out there somewhere. So you're all invited to come to the position. My finance, trustee Cap?
Good evening, everyone. And I have nothing to say.
Thank you, trustee Cap. Any public utilities, trustee Greer?
Good evening. So daylight saving time ending on November 3rd. That's also a good time to change your batteries in your smoke detectors and be aware of scammers from these public utilities calling asking about switching over to their agency. Which is like a monitoring service for the utilities in Illinois. So please be aware of scamming.
Thank you very much. Trustee Hart is blocking traffic. Couldn't I get here? But I believe he has set up another basketball tournament on November 12th at the Park District. And if we will get more information on that at the next meeting, it will be, if you can scroll on the screen a minute. But that's for safety, because if it's November 8th or November 10th, the cost of the election, we cannot have. At this time, presentation, trustee Garcia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the Village of Burnham has a proclamation honoring Village Attorney Stanford Goric upon his 50 years of service on October 25th, 2022.
Not 19.
So. Oh, okay. So October 19th. Whereas Stanford Goric was born in Chicago, Illinois, April 19th, 1947. Served in the United States Army and obtained a doctor's degree from DePaul University College of Law. Stanford Goric began his public service career over 50 years ago. Stanford Goric first began 20 years ago as a clerk for the Village of Burnham. On Stanley's first day as clerk, he had to prosecute for the Village of Burnham. Stanley was officially appointed village prosecutor two years later. Stanley took a case to the Illinois Supreme Court for the Village of Burnham and eight other towns regarding in-fight consent and won the case. Stanley is a part of the Illinois Municipal League, Illinois Lawyer Government Association, Will County Bar Association, and Lake County Bar Association. Stanley's current service for the Village of Burnham is village attorney, which Mayor Polk appointed him to that position in 2015. Stanley's hard work, talent, and leadership Stanley's hard work, talent, and leadership were essential in helping Burnham through many cases and changes throughout his service to the village. Stanley has been happily married to Sally for forty-nine years. He has four children together, Steven, Stacy, Suzanne, and Sharon. He's proud that all his children have had successful lives and they are proud grandparents to ten beautiful grandchildren. Stanley has always demonstrated a strong commitment to his profession and the professional development of those around him, and has seen much positive growth in the Village of Burnham. And now therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Polk, on behalf of the trustees, citizens, and employees of the Village of Burnham, do hereby issue this proclamation to Stanley Feborick in recognition of his many achievements. We extend our gratitude and appreciation to Stanley for fifty years of exemplary service and all his service to the Village of Burnham. We congratulate him for a job well done and wish him continued success as a village attorney for many years to come.
Thank you very much.
If I can.
Now we're gonna get into that.
A long time ago, on the south side of Chicago, around Polish, fella. Parents worked in a factory and steel mill. Had a dream of being a lawyer. Lot of hard work. Lot of years. Lot of things I've seen. And there is one person that, uh, recognized, and I'm, I'm, I'm floored by it, I'm really, I don't know what to say. But I can tell you, without my wife, could you please stand? Without her, being by my side and working together, none of this, I wouldn't be here today. That's how he said it, a man who can't hold a woman by his side. And that's very true.
That's a good one.
I sometimes tell the joke that I wear the pants of my family. However, every morning before I put them on, I ask my wife which ones I should wear. And that's true. Without her, I wouldn't have done any of this. I wouldn't have been able to do all this. Because of her, I have four wonderful children. Because of them, I have ten wonderful grandchildren. And, uh, unfortunately, uh, for one, one set, they're all over Detroit. North Carolina and, uh, Wyoming. My family in Detroit's now has COVID, so, found that out on the way coming here today. But, uh, as I said, that time, I was sworn in on October nineteenth, nineteen seventy-two. And the very next day, I was clerking for the lawyer who was acting as the prosecutor then. And, uh, as that clerk, uh, I prepared all the cases that were gonna go to court. And I have to prep him the day before, whatever. So the date is, I got sworn in that afternoon. You know, I had, I had a nice lunch, everything else that, and we're talking about what we're gonna do the next day. He looked at me and said, oh, kid, you're going to Burnham, you're gonna prosecute. And that started it. He retired and officially, you know, I took over in, uh, nineteen seventy-four. Dick Katuka, that's his, uh, attorney at that time. In January of twenty fifteen, Dick passed away, and I basically inherited this spot. Throughout all those years, I've had a affinity and a love developed for this community, for the residents that I sought to try to serve. We protected them against individuals that committed crimes against them. Sometimes I had even prosecuted them, unfortunately, for minor transgression. But throughout it, throughout all of these fifty years, I've always felt this is a wonderful community. Place to grow, a place to raise your children. And I can just say that with this current board of trustees, president administration, with the mayor, he looks out for the safety and well-being of all of you, and I admire that. And I really appreciate the opportunity that this board and the mayor has given me to act as your village attorney. I try to do my best, uh, the best I can with the knowledge that I gain and the experience that I have. I hope to do it for, for several more years, as God will. And, uh, I'm honored, I'm honored.
That's good.
Thank you.
I would like to say that, uh, I would like to say, you know, sometime in these situations, I mean, it's okay to be a little motioning, because I worked at the steel mill for forty-two and a half years. A lot of people don't know that. Forty-two and a half years, and, uh, and I left in December of, um, two thousand sixteen. And, um, so they gave me a little part, a little celebration. I was crying like a baby. I've never been so vulnerable in my life. I just, I just couldn't hold it together, so, it's a lot of things, so, um, so thanks for getting a congratulations. Okay, well, I, I mean, are there any communication, the rest of my, a memorial? Then, um, are there any unfinished business from the board? There's no new business? Oh, wait a minute, there is new business. Take that off, take that, trustee.
Request, uh, discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve the reschedule of the regular board meeting of the president and board of trustees of the Village of Burnham from Tuesday, November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, to Thursday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-two. At seven P M. at the village hall courtroom.
Trustee, you making a motion, so could we have a second? Did you make a motion already?
No, I'm okay to make. I'd like to make a motion to reschedule the board meeting from November eighth, twenty-twenty-two to Thursday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
That's the cost of the election, I mean, yeah, okay. Okay, we need a second please?
Second.
Will clerk take it over?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.